I'm going to open up this meeting, so let's have a roll call vote to begin this meeting. Lori?
Lori Garcia here.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein here.
Marissa?
At that time, I don't think we heard you.
Marissa, you're muted, that's all. Just unmute. There you go.
Marissa Carrery here.
Okay. Shannon?
Shannon Dunham here.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt here.
And Cindy Kuzinski here. So we're going to begin this meeting. Welcome to the January 26, 2021 School Committee Meeting. Do we have any announcements, Dr. Leclerc?
Yes, we do. Thank you. I just want to remind everyone that this Thursday night, we are having a kindergarten information night from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. It will be a virtual meeting. If you'd like more information on that, you can go to any of our district webpages, either the elementary school or the main district page, or feel free to reach out to one of the principals at the elementary schools for the Zoom link. Please spread the word. We want to make sure that we reach as many people as possible. I think that last year, we did this event in person in January, so this will be the first time it's virtual, so we hope for a good turnout. I'd also like to let everyone know that there are free meals available for children in the East Hampton community. If you need more information on that, you can find information on our webpage, and you can also get more information by contacting someone at the school department to find out what it's all about. So all that information is on our website.
Thank you. And our next meeting will be February 9, 2021. And now correspondence, please.
Before I report on the correspondence here, I just want to mention that a few additional emails came in this afternoon, and because Sue Colby had already put together our packets and finalized the correspondence, I will be reporting on those messages at our next meeting. So I'll work through these now. From Shelley Thompson, asking for on ice hockey for her three children, setting the safety record of the Nanatack Valley Hockey Association team. From Amanda Judd, writing in advocacy of in-person schooling for her first grader, who has been struggling with remote learning, and noting that other districts in the area have offered some form of in-person learning. From Tracy Teague, writing in advocacy of in-person learning as we approach a year of closure, citing neighboring districts that have opened their buildings, as well as local daycares and preschools that are offering in-person services. From Tyler Struthers, writing in regards to his friend Sam Garcia, who died suddenly in December of this year. Sam was a graduate of EHS and a former athlete, and Tyler is asking about naming the field at the new school after him as a tribute. From Christine DiNucci, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, requesting that we consider moving to the hybrid model, citing a range of academic, personal, and social challenges experienced by her five children during remote learning, despite the best efforts of their teachers. From Carrie Damon, writing as a parent of four children in the district, requesting a return to in-person school, citing how other towns in the area have offered forms of in-person schooling, and asking for clarification about why East Hampton hasn't been able to offer something similar, specifically around the metrics and the requirements that we need to meet. And from Jessica Lucia, voicing frustration and heartbreak that has been nearly a year of school closure, that we missed the opportunity to send kids back in the fall when numbers were low, and also asking how it is that our community has all sorts of businesses open but has not opened its schools. So that was the correspondence that came in before this afternoon's deadline.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to open up public speak. I'm going to ask that you say who you are, and please limit it to three minutes. And I will please signal that you would like to talk, and I will keep scrolling through. Linda B raised her hand.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm Linda Broadhurst, longtime resident of East Hampton. I actually want to read a letter from my daughter, who wanted to speak tonight but is working. So if that's okay, I'd like to just read you this quick little letter.
Yes.
All right. My name is Reagan Broadhurst. I'm a senior at EHS and have been a student in East Hampton since I was two years old in Mrs. Mason's Tiny Top class. I want you to have a perspective of what it's like being a fully remote student. When it started last March, I understood it and agreed with it, but never did I think after 10 months, we would still be at home full-time. Nothing has changed. I felt bad for the class of 2020, but they at least had the majority of their senior year. My class has missed everything. Our first-day assembly, homecoming, Friday night football, basketball, hockey, all these things that we can never get back. We finished our first semester and have done everything asked of us, but still no plans to get back into the school. The school has not even mentioned anything about us seniors. It's like we don't matter at all. Every important event has been taken from us. I understand the seriousness of the pandemic, but please explain to me why it's okay for me to work this whole time. I am an essential employee. That's okay, but I can't be allowed into my school. EHS is the newest school and has already had kindergarteners and first graders allowed in there, so it must be safe to be there. When will the students who belong in there be allowed? We are more than capable of keeping our masks on and social distancing, much more than younger students who may not understand it. This school was built for the high school population, and they should have priority to be in there. The graduating class is missing out on everything. What about students who need scholarships from sports, et cetera? My friends and I have become so discouraged and depressed. We are overwhelmed trying to get our work done and not having in-person learning. You have beaten us down, and we are so over it. We've had low COVID numbers in East Hampton in the past and still have not gone back. Any students or teachers who don't feel comfortable can still do remote, but everyone I talk to wants to be back in our classrooms. Don't take away our last days of being an East Hampton student. This is a time I will never get back. We want our building back, our principal, vice principal, teachers, coaches, janitors, lunch ladies. We want our life back to some sort of normalcy, and you have the power to make it happen. Your job is to help our schools and students, so do your job and let us do ours. Thank you. Reagan Broadhurst, EHS Class of 2021. And that's it. Thank you for letting me read that for her sheet.
Thank you. I see Tyler. Tyler Struthers?
Hey, how you doing? I'm just here tonight to talk about my friend Sam that passed away. I'm a longtime East Hampton resident. I work for the fire department in town. I'm a paramedic firefighter here. I've known Sam for 15 years. He was always a great kid. I wrote a letter to everybody. I'm sure everybody already read it, but I'll read it again. Writing today in regards to my best friend Sam Garcia, who lost his life tragically on 12/16/20 in a motor vehicle accident. His family has submitted a letter about possibly naming the field at the new school after him. I know it's a large request. I don't really know the process behind it, but I just wanted to give some insight about his life and who he was and why his family would be seeking this request, and as many of my friends as well. We're all East Hampton graduates. He was an athlete. He played football and won a Super Bowl with the EHS during his time there. He went on to bachelor's degree from Elms College. Sorry. He was just a great student academically and a great athlete. His family also tragically lost his sister when I was in high school at EHS at a young age, in 2006 or 2007. They're an amazing family. They're East Hampton residents, lifelong East Hampton residents. Just thought this would be a great opportunity for his family to have something for him, some sort of memorial that would be, you know, fitting of his life, and it would be obviously appreciated by everybody, his friends and family. Yeah, that's pretty much it. It's kind of difficult to talk about still, but I appreciate, and my friends appreciate, and his family appreciates, everybody's time and effort and concern. Yeah, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I didn't see anybody right now, but I'm going to scroll through. Please signal if you would like to talk. This is your time.
I'd like to say something.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Jennifer. I have a K student at Maple, and I know you guys have really worked hard with trying to get our special population and our K back. I just wanted to give an update that our Ks or K kids are really struggling. It was just on a parent board, and I'm not going to share, you know, anyone's personal information, but it was, hey, does anyone else's kiddo is struggling? And it was heartbreaking to read all of the replies. There were so many, and myself included, of my little guy, who cries just about or has a meltdown every single day. You know, he's doing his best, but what was repeated in all the comments are their kids saying they hate school. They already have the language to say they hate school. And I don't know if anyone else remembers their kindergarten, you know, Play-Doh and glue and magic and finding the magic in books and wow, look at, you know, just really the light bulbs going on. And so I just wanted to just share and advocate, and I know that there is just heartbreak all around, and we're all doing the best we can, but I just wanted to, as a parent, to really, you know, just have it be on the record that our littles are really struggling. So, yeah, I mean, I get it. I get what we need to do and keep everyone safe, but just I wanted to, you know, let you guys know that we're struggling. Our littles are struggling.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't right now see any other hands.
I'd like to talk. I'm sorry, I can't put my hand up.
Okay. Who is this place?
This is Lori McCullo.
Okay.
How?
Thank you.
I don't live in East Hampton. I am a first-grade teacher in East Hampton, and I hear you. I hear you. This is not easy. This is not easy to teach these little guys, and I can't imagine, I have a 16-year-old myself. It's not an easy time. I want to just throw this back at you, though. Your children couldn't play with Play-Doh if they went to school right now. Your children couldn't share books if they went to school right now. Your children couldn't play a game on a board if they went to school right now. I couldn't tie the shoes of a first grader if I was in their classroom six feet apart from them right now. School going back in a hybrid situation is going to be vastly different than what you remember or what your children remember. So it is not necessarily the answer to the loneliness that your children are feeling, unfortunately, because the hybrid situation that you would be looking at is not what you think a classroom would be like. So I really want to just throw that out there because I think our hopes, I hope, I want to get back in the classroom tomorrow. I want to be vaccinated and be free from this worry. That's not going to happen right away. It will happen, but it's not going to happen right away. And the things that your kids are going through, they're going to continue to go through for a little while, because it's just, we cannot hold them in our arms and hold them on our laps, and they can't sit in a circle together because of the virus, unfortunately. I do hear you, and I want it to change. And I do think, I really appreciate the parents of East Hampton. They've been wonderful to my class. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, sorry, I can't say anything else. I'm sorry.
It really is supposed to be one person speaks one. Sorry.
Okay. I'm not advocating for going back. I just want to make sure that, like, the mental health piece is there to help support our kiddos as well. Yeah, so I get it, that it's going to be different. So got it.
Thank you.
Candace? Good evening. I just wanted to say, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that I had COVID back in Thanksgiving, and I thought I was over it. I just got home Thursday night from many days in the ICU. I thought I was better, except for the fatigue. I have three teens, by the way, one at the middle school and two at the high school. I ended up having just a residual fatigue and a cough, but about a week before I went in the hospital, I started to lose my breath. I was very winded. I guess I stayed home a little longer than I should have, because the day I went, they told me if I had not come that day, I would have died the next. So I got home Thursday night. I have double pulmonary embolisms, which are blood clots in my lungs. They're calling me a long-hauler. It's a new term that the doctors are using for people who are just having COVID. Follow them everywhere. So I am home with oxygen, and I am home scared to death. Serious blood thinners, and they say it can take six months to a year for this to dissolve and for me to feel better. So I get it. I get what everybody is saying. I just, I get it. My kids want to go back. Everybody wants to go back. I just wanted to mention the seriousness of what really is happening here, so that people can see both sides. I feel so bad for all the kids that want to go back. I just want, I understand it, but I just also know that we want our kids alive, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's scroll through. Please make sure you let, once I close, open speak. That will be it. Okay. All right. Marissa, you don't see anyone, right? I'm not missing anything? Okay. All right, so we're going to close public speak. Thank you for your comments. And we're going to go on to policy subcommittee update.
We haven't met and don't have a plan to at this time.
And finance?
We have not met since the last meeting, but we will be scheduling upcoming meetings to start to delve into the budget for FY 2022 shortly, in February.
Thank you. How about the collaborative?
I've got a meeting lined up with them tomorrow evening, and I'll let you know how it goes.
All right. And so Lori, I think you'll weigh in when we talk about our COVID response update? Okay, because that's next on our agenda. So would you like me to say something now? Yes. Yes? Yes. I think that the many people who are on this call saw my camera go off multiple times. I'm feeling fragile right now, listening to everybody. The number of meetings that I attend per week, as well as my fellow school committee members, we're all on different teams. I'm on the COVID response team, as I've said many times, and I feel so fortunate to be able to bring science back to our community. Nevertheless, I still get letter after letter from students and parents, such as those who have spoken tonight, pleading with us to bring their children back to school, to allow athletes to play. I hear you. I want to remind you that I am a teacher. I teach five hours of classes every day, and I see my students because their cameras are on, and I talk to them, and I check in on them, because I care. We all care. But I'm listening to people like Candace, who just divulged personal health information. I have had friends die from this pandemic. I want my students in school. I want my students in this district in school. We all do. We hear you. I want seniors to experience the joys of being a senior before it's too late. We are doing everything possible to get your students back in school, and it is not professional for an elected to be here in tears, but that's where I feel I am at right now, because I want you to believe that we do everything possible to make it be safe for the students, for the families that they go home to, for the teachers that have to be in the classroom. So please believe us that we are following science, and the epidemiologist once again has said that the school spread mirrors the community spread. Our numbers are very bad in this community now. It may appear that they got better because we went from red to yellow, but if you look at the metrics, the number of cases actually increased. The only reason that we went from red to yellow is because the number of tests increased by bringing back the students to Williston. They are extremely fortunate to have the funding to be able to test 700 people twice in one week. That was what brought the numbers to a different place percentage-wise. So I am following everything, as we all are. So please believe that we are going to get special populations first back as soon as possible. We're examining the metrics. Dr. Leclerc is going to show you that. But I am reporting because I am on that COVID response team, and as I said a few minutes ago, we sit with an epidemiologist, four nurses, a pediatrician, and they are all in agreement with what we decide. So please believe we're doing what's best. And I'm sorry, as I said, if I got emotional, but it's just listening, and I tell you all, we do listen and we do read, so please believe that. And please bring the numbers down by being safe. The community is driving us to keep the kids home. People are eating together in places. You can support our local restaurants. Support them, but bring it to safety. Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Leclerc, do you want anything else at this moment, or just go on to the naming of facilities and grounds?
I think we can go to that. Yes.
There you go.
So we had, I don't know if, Marissa, I know you deal with the correspondence. I don't know if you want to read the letter from the Garcia family, or if you'd like me to read it. I don't want to step on any toes. Okay.
I don't mind.
Okay. So we received a letter recently from the Garcia family, a family in this community, and on behalf of the Garcia family, we've put this on our agenda tonight for discussion and review. So if it's all right, I'll just read the letter. It's one page. Dear East Hampton School Committee, I am writing this on behalf of Sam Garcia, the Garcia family, his friends, and the large community of East Hampton that he touched so deeply. Tragically, he passed away December 16, 2020. In just 25 short years, in his just 25 short years of life, he accomplished as much as excelling in academics, sports, and social life. East Hampton High School, oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading this on my iPhone, and you can tell my eyes are going. Let me go back. I missed a sentence. Throughout his journey from Whitebrook Middle School, moving into East Hampton High, he unanimously winning, he unanimously won Mr. East Hampton, working up to three jobs while attending Elms College, where he received a bachelor's degree in business. Sam Garcia Jr. is seen as a role model for everyone that knew him. He faithfully valued loyalty, respect, selflessness, joy, enthusiasm, positivity, and unconditional love. Those values deserve to be honored for the current and younger generations to come. We can't think of anything more honorable than naming an academic building, sporting facility, or erecting a statue memorial in his memory. Sam was very passionate about sports. Both his football and basketball jersey numbers are to be retired from East Hampton High School. With construction nearly finished, we thought of naming the Mountain View Schools Sporting Facility after him. That is just one idea. We know there is a process in regards to what is being asked. We would like to bring this to your attention, and they offer some other information about their availability, and it's signed sincerely, "The Garcia Family and East Hampton Community." So the process for naming facilities is outlined in a school committee policy that I believe Sue Colby shared with the committee. Does everyone have that policy? My understanding historically is that we have not named facilities after a person in many years. My understanding was that names were put forward at the time the East Hampton High School was built, and it was decided that names would not be used for that facility. I will say, as an aside, being part of the school building committee and part of this committee, there were several names of individuals in the community that were brought forward for various reasons. When we were deciding on the name of the pre-K through 8 building, and we decided against naming the building after an individual, I think that there are ways to memorialize students we have lost, graduates we have lost, alumni, staff. There are ways that we can do that in a respectful manner, and I'm happy to work with the family. I can think of scholarships, plaques, you know, things like that. We are going to have a memorial garden at our pre-K through 8 school bench. You know, there are various ways that we can memorialize, but it's not my recommendation at this time that we look to name the athletic field, which is not a football field. It's an athletic field for all sports. I don't think we should give it a name at this point in time, but that's my recommendation, and I just get paid to advise, so I open it up to the committee. But that's my recommendation, and I just get paid to advise, so I open it up to the committee.
Anybody want to weigh in? Erin, and then Shannon?
Go ahead, Shannon.
Okay.
Okay. I did want to just mention that we've, we had talked about naming the previous field. And the J.J. Duchesne Foundation had generously donated a large sum of money. The scoreboard was added with his name on it. However, the field, we had decided back then, should not be named. So I love the idea of doing a memorial or something like that, or calling it like Alumni Field, or something like that. But to name it after a person, I don't think is the best option.
Erin?
Yeah, I just, I think that there's, I mean, obviously, the situation is very unfortunate. And, you know, a loss to a family, a loss to our community is certainly a tragic situation. I, I think, though, that some sort of memorial, you know, if we sat down and started to look at all the different names that we might want to use for different things, I think that that would become a whole different conversation. And I think particularly, say, like the Athletic Field or something like that, as Shannon just mentioned, has intentionally not been named in that sort of way. I, I guess I would ask for us to maybe take another look and think about a longer, you know, take a longer conversation than we really have time right here and now, and do something. And certainly recognize a student with an important past in our school that has been lost, but not to step forward with naming like our field at this time.
Jonathan, Marissa, Mayor, anybody want to weigh in?
I was just taking, I was just taking a moment here to look, look over the policy again. And I would say I certainly agree with my colleagues. I recognize the tragic situation and also understand that there are many folks that we have lost. And I love the idea of, I, this is the first I'm hearing of a memorial garden, and I'm, I think that's a fantastic idea. And certainly support looking at other ways to memorialize students outside of the naming of specific facilities.
Laurie or Marissa?
Do we have a process for naming scholarship funds? Do we have existing scholarships that might not have names attached to them yet? Or would that be something to initiate? Because that is always such a lovely way to let somebody's name live on, and future students will get to learn about that person via applying for his scholarship and that kind of thing.
If that was a question to me, yes, there is a process for naming a scholarship in, in someone's name. And they go through the city of East Hampton, and then those funds are channeled to our school district. We do have some unnamed scholarships, but some groups of people or some individuals do specifically name scholarships, and there is a process for that. And I'm happy to inform the family if that's what they'd like to explore.
Mayor?
Yeah, um, this, yeah, I, the loss is, is deep and I am, I'm so sorry for, for the friends and, and family, but also the larger community. I've heard a lot about this young man, stories and Facebook messages. My heart breaks. As far as naming a building or, or, I think that this is a good time and for us to take pause to perhaps have the policy committee really, you know, put together options to help memorialize, you know, folks who've meant so much to East Hampton, whether that's how to be included in the Memorial Garden, or how that might be a scholarship, or, you know, various, various things. I know that I've seen a couple of different ways. So I think it would be helpful, one, to hopefully give families some options that they can look at and see what makes sense for, for them. And then, you know, have that, have that, you know, I guess be proactive about something that's just a tremendous loss and a source of hurt for the, for our city and community. So.
Thank you. Laurie?
First, I'd like to express my deepest indulences, and we appreciate the letters. It gave me a true picture. Tyler, I'm sorry I didn't have a chance to respond to your email. And thank you so much for speaking today and to his family. I really like the idea of some type of memorial. If we can't do it the way the family has proposed, I do think that a scholarship or a memorial garden are both wonderful ideas. I especially like the idea of a scholarship, if that could be done. And it could go to students who shared similar traits and values that Tyler did. And that really, as Marissa said, is a way to bring his legacy further than, I think, even naming a field. So thank you very much.
Great. I have a question. You named a number of different things. I love the idea of a memorial garden. I love the scholarship idea. Is it possible that perhaps at the next school committee meeting, we could put together the different ways that are possible for us to, to honor different people and how you would do each one? Because each one is going to be differently, different. I mean, one is the scholarship process. How do you get into, you know, what happens with the memorial garden? Is, do, is that too little time for you to put together just the what's possible and how?
Yeah, I think that, I, I think that would be a challenge for February 9th.
Okay.
I think we could aim for March.
Okay.
The first school committee meeting in March. The memorial garden has been discussed because our elementary schools have little gardens, and they have little ways that they memorialize folks in their buildings. And so we want to bring that together to a larger community. The athletic director and I have talked about doing some kind of memorial area around the athletic field, but that's just in very preliminary conversations. So I may be able to give you more of a frame for what that will look like. Scholarships, obviously, there is a process in place, so I could share that out with you. You know, we've also done retiring jerseys, which I think the, you know, the Garcia family noted has been done. And so we've done that. That's another way to memorialize students, student athletes that we've had in the past. So there are many things that we do. I could give you a little overview of that in March.
That would be great.
Okay.
And, and I do realize February 9th would be a very short amount of time. Tyler, I can't have you back for, once we close public speak, we're not allowed to, to open it up again. So you're welcome to come and talk at our February 9th again. So March, we will discuss ways to honor and do memorials. Okay, now on to our COVID update. The metrics.
Just to say one other thing, Cindy, too, I think it's certainly, you know, Tyler and the family, you know, can certainly reach back out to Allison again and help make certain requests with understanding the parameters of what we're talking about now, too. So I think there's a way, not just through public speak, that they can be involved and help inform what they feel would be best, given the parameters that we've just talked about now.
Okay.
Thank you for saying that, Mary. Yes, absolutely. To the Garcia family and to those that are supporting the Garcia family during this difficult time, if there's something that I can do to work with you on this, if you have ideas that you want to bring forward, please do. I'm happy to help. I know that the athletic director has had some conversations with the family, and we can absolutely work with him, with the building principal at the high school. There are all kinds of folks that, you know, we could put together on this issue.
Great. Thank you.
So the COVID metrics, and I think that this speaks to the deeper discussion about the return to school. So there are a few things that I want to say. Kind of building on some of the comments that were made tonight, including Laurie Garcia's comments. The COVID response team meets weekly. We met yesterday. We purposely meet before school committee so that we can discuss all of the different aspects related to returning to school. And I want to be clear. We look at many different pieces of information. Our epidemiologist, that's been mentioned in this group, provides us with a weekly review of data for East Hampton and for the state at large. So everyone on the school committee and their COVID response committee and all the administrators are, look at that document. We also have a daily metric that we review that's a form, based on a formula for COVID cases in the Hampshire, Hamden, and Franklin County area, where many of our students and staff come from. And that's something we worked on collaboratively with the teachers' union. So we monitor the number that we are looking, that's going on every day in the area to see what the trends are. We also have conversations weekly, if not bi-weekly, with our city health agent, Bree. And there's now a full-time nurse that works with her that Laurie Garcia mentioned is, they're both members of our COVID response team. So we get an analysis from them of trends and patterns that they're seeing in the community, concerns that they have for what's happening in the community. And they give us some anecdotal information about what they're, what's going on. We also discuss weekly with our school physician the trends that she is seeing in her practice, which is, she's a pediatrician in the area, and some of the concerns that she's bringing to the table. So we have a lot of experts, and so there's not just one piece of information that we look at. We absolutely look on Thursday nights, as many other communities do, to see what color we are in. So there's just a whole host of pieces of information that I think Laurie would agree. An hour on the COVID response team flies by quickly, and we could probably meet longer than that. But we do meet longer than that usually, but we try to keep it to an hour. So those are all pieces of information that we're looking at. That being said, I do want to provide the community with an actual number or a target that we're trying to attain. But we are, you know, we are challenged to finalize that number. And, you know, we are, we are working on that with our teachers' union. And I think the teachers' union would concur that we're really trying to reach consensus on, on the number that we can use to move forward. To that end, I do want to say that my team is planning for the return of special populations in mid-February. And I don't have an exact date yet, but I do want to give all of the families that have been pleading with us so heartily. I do want to give people hope that the, the trend is going in the direction we want it to go in. The cases that peaked about two weeks ago are starting to go down. They're starting to stabilize. So we don't have a crystal ball, but we are keeping our fingers crossed that we're going to be at a point in mid-February. And I'm thinking probably, you know, sometime aft, I'm thinking after the break, but I could be wrong, that we can bring special populations back to schools. And that includes special populations, preschool, kindergarten, and I hope first grade as well. We, we will be returning back to our regular buildings. And in a few minutes, I'll talk about the air quality report that we had in all of our buildings to reassure families about that. But I, I do want to give that piece of information. Obviously, the committee, the school committee, will weigh in on the final decision. But given the information that we are seeing in our COVID response team, we are beginning to see a light that's telling us that we are going to be able to welcome back in our most vulnerable population in the coming weeks. And that's where we start, and we build from there. We, we don't want that to be the only group that comes in. That's where we start. And then we hope to bring in other grades incrementally after that. And, you know, we'll have more information to follow as we progress. But I wanted to share that information with everyone. Now, there are some caveats that we are thinking about that will make it a little bit more comfortable for everyone to welcome students back into the buildings. And one of those pieces is that we are not going to focus on students having lunch at school initially, while we're in the hybrid model. So we'll look at either a half-day or an extended half-day where students will get their food in a bag that they'll take home. And they'll, they'll be given that every day that they're in attendance. So we feel that that's the safest way for us to begin to bridge some of the challenges that we're facing. You know, there are families that we understand are struggling greatly. I don't have to repeat what members of the school committee have already articulated. But, you know, we are working to come back in some way in the next few weeks. And so I hope to have more specifics to share. What I can tell families is the plan is that we will be doing another survey to determine interest in this first group of students, the special populations group. It won't go to the entire student body, so don't be looking for it if you don't have a student that's in that special populations group that started in the, in the, in October, I think. That, it'll go out to that group first, and we'll be collecting responses from that group so that we can begin to build what the return to school will look like. So I'm open to reactions or questions or comments from folks on the committee.
Marissa?
Thank you, Dr. Leclerc. I know this is a really hard question to answer, and so I'm sorry to put you on the spot. And maybe Laurie can help answer with her knowledge as the COVID response team representative. But, you know, the theme that kept coming through a lot of the correspondence that we received this week was really this question that parents have of, why is it that so many other districts in our neighboring communities have been able to offer in-person services when we haven't? And I think that that's a question that parents deserve to have some answer toward. And I, and I don't know if that's something that you could, could help to articulate this evening.
I, I think that what I would say on a positive note is that I don't believe other communities have communities have a COVID response team with the depth of knowledge that we do in our community. There are a lot of experts that weigh in weekly, and I think that weighs heavily on all of us on the COVID response team, and I think it weighs heavily on the minds of the school committee member, members, because you're taking their recommendations. And so I think that committee has a depth and breadth of knowledge that we, we probably would not see replicated in other communities. I don't know if you wanted to comment on that, Laurie?
I appreciate those statements, Dr. Leclair, because it has been so enlightening to meet with that COVID response team. We also have to recognize that our numbers in East Hampton have been higher than many of our surrounding communities. I would also like to mention that many communities that did go back at some point had to turn around and go into remote. Needham recently, this past weekend, closed after there was significant spread in their high school. I think it's worse to be treating the children like ping pong balls, going back and forth, we're going to try to get you in. We tried to bring our first graders in, and then the numbers rose so dramatically, we couldn't. We've tried to get them back in, but I know what's going on in other districts when they make these decisions, and they do not have the experts weighing in on our safety concerns.
And I think that, I think that we have been, I'll say for me, I, my, my feeling is that we have been very conservative. We have really stood by the directives, and I, I won't say directives, but by the guidance from the mayor, who sits on the lieutenant governor's COVID advisory reopening committee, which, again, not every other community has someone that sits on that board. So I, I think that, yes, I think we have been very conservative and err on the side of caution when pushed to make a decision. And I think that if you're going to hold us up against other communities around us, they may not have felt that same sense of being cautious that we did. And I don't mean to say that they were reckless, I just mean to say that that was a value that we attached to this work early on.
And I'd like to add that surrounding communities that have been faced with COVID spread and have had to close, know about, about the experts on the COVID response team and get in touch with the East Hampton COVID response team to see how they should proceed.
And the other issue is that we've only had, initially, we only had one building that we were going to be approved to bring students into. So there, there are so many factors that are different from other communities that have just hampered us. So I have a question. In January, before our numbers blew up, what we were going to do is we had a staggered plan for starting with special pops pre-K, K in first grade. And then we, because I have it in my calendar, then we were going to go two through six returns, and then seven through 12. So our, is the COVID team, are you envisioning that we're going to do that same, you know, staggered response that's pretty close to, I think we had two weeks for the special pops and then one week and then one week. So within four weeks, our hope was that once we started, we got everybody in. Is that?
I, you know, in a, in a perfect world, I think that would be great, but I think that we have some challenges to overcome with the teachers' union, and I, I think that they would admit the same. And so I, I hate to give people false hope. I think we will move as quickly as we can. Our buildings are ready, and you'll see that in a few minutes. And it will be a matter of structuring, our, doing our surveys of the families and setting up transportation for those families that need it. So there will be some time in between. We did, we did say that we would give teachers a few weeks' notice to transition between remote and hybrid so that they can prepare to be back in, in a different way than they have been in a year. So those are factors that we're considering. But yes, we will stagger, we will stagger, and I hope to give you more specific information in February, at the February 9th school committee meeting. We've begun looking at that plan again and seeing how we can make it work, but there are a few obstacles that we need to account for in that plan that, you know, before we finalize it.
I'd also like to emphasize that it really, we cannot put dates to this. The advisory committee is recommending that we base this on numbers. So once again, I'm telling the community, you are the ones who are going to drive this, the number down and get your students back into the classrooms.
Right. Yeah, I wasn't looking for a firm date, and Jonathan and then Marissa are next, but my, my thinking is just trying to help people envision how we're going to do this, how we're going to stagger in once we go. Jonathan and then Marissa?
I just wanted to, based off of the comments that Dr. Leclair just made, I would just throw out there, since we're looking at now using all of the buildings, since we've taken the steps necessary to make them safe for students, when you come back to present to the committee, I would be interested in thinking about ways that we could stagger it differently, rather than having, you know, we start with the, just the younger grades, and the other buildings are not having students coming into them. It seems to me that the way to stagger it would be, at this point, to do a little bit kind of across the board, and I would just be interested in seeing a plan that kind of encapsulated that.
And we have talked about that, and that's the direction we are leaning in, Jonathan, for that very reason, that rather than bringing everyone back only at the elementary and having the, the other two buildings lie empty, we could be bringing back students in smaller groups in the other buildings as well. And I forgot to mention, with that special population timeframe in February, we also are including the remote learning centers in that as well. And so those will be in each of the buildings as well. So I just, I forgot to mention that, and I don't, I didn't want to let people think that that dropped off by the wayside. And that includes our ELL population also in the special populations group. Did I mention that before? It's been a long day.
Great, thank you.
All right, Marissa? Marissa?
With acknowledgement that the precise number is still under negotiation with the union, can you give us like a ballpark sense of what are those numbers that we're looking to see when we're asking our community to take us from here? Where's kind of the, the range that we're looking at as an indicator that we might be getting closer to opening our building?
So yes, I can tell you specifically, on the metric that we work on with the teachers' union, that data is collected from various counties around us, and there's a formula attached to it. And it has been as high as 52 cases per 100,000 on a rolling seven-day average, which peaked about two weeks after Christmas, and it is down to 32 today. So in about two weeks, it's gone down significantly, which is kind of the trend where we're seeing with, you know, now that people have maybe stopped doing all those big social, social events that they did maybe over the holidays. And the number that we are sitting at with the teachers' union right now is 23 to return our special populations back into the classroom. So we're at 32 today. So it's a rolling seven-day average per 100,000, based on a formula for the three counties, Franklin, Hampshire and Hamden counties. I was going to produce this information weekly for families so that they could track it, but I'll be honest and say that I am really wanting to reexamine those metrics, and I've, I've told the committee that. So we're in the midst of trying to work on that right now with the teachers' union.
Mary Ann?
So first off, I just want to thank Dr. Leclair and your leadership team. I think that's excellent that we are reevaluating where we stood. I mean, obviously, we had last sort of talked about this as a possibility, I think at the end of November, early December, where we sort of laid out the plans to be able to have this rolling return in January. But then clearly, the numbers didn't allow us to move that direction. So I think it's great that as those numbers start to come down, we can revisit it. I certainly support looking at all the different ways to get our kids back into their classes and starting with special populations and then moving towards other classes, other grades would be excellent. So I just, I just want to thank you for helping us move in that direction and for your team to be preparing that. And I agree, there, there's a lot of conversations and a lot more research than what we had in July, October, you know, September, whenever, when we were sort of developing these metrics and using, looking what we could use first. And there's a lot more conversations about safety precautions in locations, having much more impact on the transmission that happens in that site, as opposed to just a general metric for the community. And so I think that is really important for us to be looking at. There's a lot more research from CDC and from other schools, Harvard studies, things like that, that are talking about other ways to look at the safety precautions that we've set up in our buildings, for our classrooms, for our teachers, for our students, that keeps them safe in that setting, even as there might be other factors in the community that may have the metrics higher than what we'd actually want it to be at. Obviously not, if it's very rampant, we want to still be extra safe, but the, the safety precautions need to be really taken into consideration. And I know you're going to get to this in a few moments from now, but I think that we have gone through and really reflected on our buildings. We've gotten, you know, a lot of great feedback that we didn't have initially on what we needed to do to make those spaces safe, and so that we really can bring our students and our teachers back into that environment, set up all the good precautions, set up the air purifier, set up all the different things that we need to be able to use those buildings safely, and be able to get back our kids back into school as best we can. You know, not for everybody, if you still want to allow people to choose to stay home. I know some school districts are saying, have shut down that as an option, and I don't think that that's, I think it's really important that we leave that as an option for all those families that choose that, at least through this school year, that they choose that option. But I think that for now, we really do need to start to look at concrete dates and concrete practices of how we're going to get our kids back into class. So thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Shannon, did you want to say something about this? I thought you had your hand up.
I did, thank you very much. And again, I appreciate everything that the administration team is doing in the COVID response. The last time we talked about this, we had talked about earlier in February, possibly getting the first group of students into school. And then, you know, I had thrown out March 1st as a possible date to strive for getting everybody back in a hybrid model. Could you just explain the delays at this point?
Sure. It, it has to do largely with a few factors. It has to do with the metrics that we're looking at, which are not near where they need to be for us to return to the buildings. And it has to do with the COVID response team, who is an advisory group to the school committee, and that team is not ready to advise the committee to approve a return to school yet. We, we meet every week, and I, I think it's fair to say, and Laurie can weigh in, I think it's fair to say that we're having some really fruitful discussions, and I think that the committee is really getting to a point where they're feeling more comfortable about the way the numbers are tracking. But this, I, I feel like this is the first week that we've had that kind of dialogue and for, for many, many weeks. So I like your timeframe, Shannon, but it, it needs to be based in the data that we have for the COVID response team to positively recommend that we move in that direction. So I, I don't think they're there yet, and Laurie can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're right, but I do want to say something that we are fortunate that the union is letting us use a weighted average, because we are actually worse in East Hampton than surrounding communities. And if we had to rely just on the numbers in East Hampton, we'd be in worse shape getting back. So a lot of times, people are always blaming the teachers' union for this, but they have been generous in allowing us to use the weighted. But we all have to be careful.
So I'm just thinking, if we're having a meeting February 9th, and we're hopefully going to be looking at lower numbers and start to think about getting everybody back, I'm wondering if on the 23rd, we should have another meeting just with one item on the agenda, and that is to look at continuing the discussion of getting students back. It wouldn't be, you know, the full regular city, school committee meeting, but I'm thinking that that would be another two-week period where we could look at those numbers, especially since we're trying to give teachers a two-week heads-up. I don't want a month to go by after February 9th where we're not talking about bringing kids back. So I'm thinking one item on the agenda, which would just be the reopening plan. How does everyone feel?
I, I think that's fine, yeah.
Shannon?
Okay, so we're talking about possibly letting the first group of kids in two weeks after that into March.
No, I think that there's, there's first a conversation that will happen on the 8th that will be, that will be likely to be recommending the stu, the special populations to start the Monday after the spring break is, or fall, winter break, whatever, is over.
Correct.
And that date is?
It's February 22nd?
22nd.
22nd. And I would certainly agree to having a additional meeting on the 23rd, where we then are reflecting on that point to be able to move forward with additional populations coming in and what the current numbers are at that point. I guess I definitely agree that this is not a time for us to have our, have a, only one meeting a month, but to come back and meet again quickly to, regularly, to be able to do that hard work.
And it would be a very simple agenda.
But to Shannon's point, and I, this may not be the point she was trying to, to make, so Shannon, correct me, but, you know, if the trend continues to stabilize and/or go down, I don't feel as though I, as a superintendent, need to wait until the 23rd in order to wait for you to vote and then inform teachers on the 24th. If I see the trend is going down to a point where I think we can have the conversation with the teachers, get ready, because, you know, the school committee is probably going to approve this Tuesday night, but you guys should be ready to go, you know, immediately, two weeks after that, you know, and, you know, so we can keep that ball rolling. I don't think I need to wait until the Wednesday after a school committee meeting to start the clock ticking with the teachers.
Correct.
The trend is, you know, is still okay, and if we have information, you know, what no one has mentioned is also, phase two starts next week.
Right.
And so, you know, fingers crossed about the vaccine. But as some of these factors are starting to play, come into play, I'm not feeling like I'm going to need to wait for your okay. I can tentatively say to the teachers, start getting ready because this is the way it's probably going to go unless there's some shocking piece of data that we didn't expect.
Correct. I'm hoping that you can start to give that heads-up after our February 9th meeting.
Yes, agreed.
That those conversations are happening then. I'm hoping that the numbers are down.
And as soon as I can get it, get it up and going, I want to get it going.
I just want to have another meeting scheduled. We can always cancel. I would rather have a meeting scheduled and people ready and making the time to address this so that we don't have a holdup. So can everybody just let me know, is that okay? Give me a nod, we'll do, okay, great, all right, thank you.
So Cindy, just to clarify, is there any, is there any vote that we're looking to move towards or any kind of motion needed? I don't think there is, but just to clarify out of this, it sounds like Dr. Leclair and her team is going to move forward with preparing for a opening on the 22nd with special populations. And we'll talk about more details next meeting, as well as the rollout for potential other grades coming in after that.
Correct, yeah, we don't need to vote now because we're not making any major change except adding an extra meeting to, to look at all of this. So thank you, that's, that's good news.
And February 9th, I hope to have the, more of a layout for you about kind of with the, with some timeframe markers in it.
Great, great. Shannon? You're on mute, okay.
I know, I just wanted to, Sue, do we have to vote on the meeting date only because we're voting on the calendar tonight?
No, this is like an extra meeting. It's not a regular school committee meeting. It's really just going to have one issue.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Unless Sue jumps in and tells me I'm totally wrong, I don't think we need to worry about it. I think it's okay to have extra, we just can't have less.
So if it's all right, I'm going to shift to the air quality report?
Yes, please.
Okay. Can you share the screen with me, please?
Yes, sorry.
So while we're getting that queued up, I just want to let everyone know that this information was shared with the committee. We've also shared this information on our district website under the COVID section of our district website. So for anyone that is interested in reading the, in all of our air quality reports, please go to our district website. This is just a brief, brief summary of some of the highlights from those reports to let the community know what we've been doing over these last few months. So why did we test the air quality? Every school district, basically in the state of Massachusetts, has reviewed air quality as a result of COVID-19. We've looked at the ventilation and the filtration system in all of our buildings. How did we do that? We contracted with Colliers project leaders to do an in-depth review and analysis of the systems in all five schools and provide recommendations for areas of improvement. They are the project managers on the new school. And so they're a team of engineers that have been deeply involved in East Hampton over the last few years. And so they signed on to do this work, being familiar with the school buildings. And that was really helpful to us to get this process moving. So the goal for us was to reach four air exchanges per hour, which is a benchmark minimum exchange rate, as indicated by ASHRI, which is the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating and Air Conditioning Engineers and is the general industry standard-setting body nationally. The Mass-, state of Massachusetts did not put out their own standards, so we relied on this national metric to help us, rather than pulling a figure out of thin air. So Center and Maple schools are probably the, the schools that many folks are thinking, wow, you know, what's going on with those schools? So the classrooms in those schools do not have mechanical ventilation or filtration systems. They're, they're older schools and they were not built with those systems in place. So the recommendation from our engineers was to add portable air purifiers in the classrooms. So in every classroom, there will be a minimum of two air purifiers to reach the four air exchanges per hour that is dictated by ASHRI. And if the space is larger than a normal classroom, the engineers have indicated how many air purifiers we should put in the space. So it's not going to be random. Did we complete this? Yes, we have the air purifiers, we have the extension cords, we have everything we need. And those have been deployed to Center and Maple schools. They're being set up in the classrooms as we speak, if not already, and that task is done. To continue on, they also note that some bathrooms either had no exhaust fans at Center and Maple or insufficient ventilation rates. So the recommendation from the engineers was to install new fans or adjust the existing exhaust. That has been completed. Our maintenance staff took care of all that already. Also, we are mandated by the Department of Education to now create COVID isolation rooms that are dedicated spaces with separate air exhaust systems. So we have identified a space and we have installed a three-speed wall exhaust fan to achieve 10 air exchanges per hour, which for this COVID isolation room is the recommendation. And that has been completed in all spaces. At Pepin, all classrooms already have existing unit ventilators that bring in outside air and recirculate the room air. The recommendation was to install MERV 13 filters. That has been completed. The basement after-school room has no mechanical ventilation. So the recommendation was to put portable air purifiers in the, in that space if it's to be used in our after-school program. So we have air purifiers allocated for that location. Additionally, some of the same comments from Center and Pepin, Center and Maple, adjusting exhaust fans in bathrooms, that's been completed. Identifying and installing a separate air system for the COVID isolation room has been completed. At Whitebrook, the maintenance team, I want to, I want to let everyone know, before the engineers even came in, based on guidance that was in the, from DESI about MERV filters, the maintenance staff in East Hampton went around and installed MERV 13 filters in all air handling units prior to the engineers coming so that the, the, there would be accuracy in what they were assessing in each classroom. Using four air exchanges per hour, there were 12 spaces identified at Whitebrook that needed further action because of low airflow. The recommendation was just to rebalance or adjust the airflow, a task that can be done by the district maintenance team. And to recheck our work, the rebalancer, which is an outside consultant, is reassessing those 12 spaces this week. So that'll be completed. At the high school, same thing, it's a newer building, but we made sure that all the filters were changed. And they're all MERV 13 or more, MERV 14 filters in all spaces prior to testing. 14 spaces were identified as requiring further action. And the recommendation was to secure an air balancer, who again is that outside contractor, to work with the maintenance staff to complete the actions. In these areas that were identified, we don't need air purifiers. This is essentially a setting that needs to be tweaked to adjust the airflow in the rooms. So the air balancer again will be on-site this week. So in summary, we contracted with Colliers Group to do an initial review of the buildings in the fall. And I shared that out with you, that's on our website as well. Then we further instructed Colliers to complete a more thorough exam of every classroom and office and, and bathroom space in all of our schools. And that was done over the months of November and December. All reports were submitted to us in December, and we have them available on our district website. In December, we also secured 100 air purifiers to distribute in spaces needed for enhanced airflow. In addition, I want to commend our maintenance staff who has repaired and replaced all filters. They've done that to exhaust fans. They've also done window screens at our elementary schools and repaired windows at our elementary schools. And they've also prepared the isolation rooms in each building, all five buildings, for an appropriate air exchange. So I just wanted to summarize the work that has been done to let everyone know that our buildings are ready to welcome students back. We feel that the, the air exchange rate is according to national standards. And I will also say that we know from the Chan School of Public Health and Dr. Allen at the, at Harvard, that just by opening a window a few inches, a few inches, we can increase airflow even more in a classroom. And leaving a classroom door open also increases air exchange. So four is the minimum, but we are assuming that our teachers, or we will be mandating that our teachers keep classroom windows open and doors open to increase air exchange even more over that four air exchanges. Maren?
Yeah, I just wanted to reaffirm exactly what you're saying. I think that it's critical that people understand that while there is this national standard and no state standard, but the national standard of four exchange is, is the minimum of what we're looking at and what we've put in place and will be able to put in place and utilize throughout the, you know, the rest of the school year that we're in those classrooms will be above four, five, six, some rooms are even being tested at 10 and higher. So there, there's a, this is sort of, that's just the basic minimum, but we are far exceeding that in a majority of our rooms. So it's, I think it's really important that they understand that this has been really great work to, to understand our buildings, to affirm where we're at and what we needed to do to make these spaces safe and that we're there and we're going to be able to exceed that. And so the buildings are no longer a concern and a sort of roadblock or an unknown, either one. We now know what we need to do, we've done what we've needed to do, and they're ready to have students in those buildings.
Right, absolutely, thank you. And they will be, you know, getting, getting the classrooms all ready. The, the custodians have gotten the, the desks and the chairs all set up. So everything is being done to prepare for the return of the students, so we're ready.
Okay, any comments? We still have technology, meals, sports and pool testing for your update.
So I will say for meals, I'm giving you an update from Chartwell's. This September, we served approximately 10,000 meals. In October, we were up to 13,000 meals per month, I'm sorry. In November, we had, we served almost 17,000 meals. In December, we were at 17,200. And that number is increasing. And so I'll give you a couple notes from Chartwell's. Since March, when we closed to now, we have served a total of 120,000 meals to children in East Hampton. Since school has started in September, there's a trend each month that, of increasing the number of meals. And that may be through word of mouth, that may be because of an increased need. There are a variety of reasons. We continue to see first-time families come take advantage of the program. Staff at both of our locations have witnessed eight to 10 new families alone in the past couple of weeks. And I would say on a daily basis, I checked with Ken today, our food service director. East Hampton High School is serving about 250 students or children per day. And Maple, which is our satellite site, is doing about 50 children per day. So I think that that number, you know, I give the food service director and his team a lot of credit. And I think that it goes without saying that I have been thinking, and my team has been thinking deeply about the meals delivery and the, the access to meals for our students since our last school committee meeting. So if I could point to a few other things that we have in the works. We're going to send out a postcard to the families enrolled in East Hampton Public Schools. That's the only address that I have access to, are the families that have children in our community. But taking the input from others that feel that perhaps email communication, robo calls, maybe not enough, newsletters not enough, so we're going to do the postcard step. We also, in addition to, you know, we've had, we, we're looking at, we started with one site. We added two more sites in the summer. One site didn't really get the foot traffic that we hoped, so we dropped it in the fall. So we are, we're at two sites now. But I am, excuse me, reviewing with my team whether we should be opening another satellite site or two sites.
Dr. Leclair, could you just, could you just mention, just for people who are paying it on right now or being able to pass this information on, can you just mention the exact dates and times? Because it's not every day that it's open, so the exact hours and days that they are open, please?
Yes, so both of our sites, East Hampton High School and Maple Elementary School, provide meals from 10:00 AM to noon time on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. And I will say, for any family that is challenged by that timeframe, if they let us know, we will work with them. Our food service has stayed kind of there late to help families that need to pick up meals at a slightly later time. Or they've worked with families to try and be creative in solving some of the challenges. You know, I think that we're open to shifting hours, but, or expanding hours. Again, that's something that I think we're going to assess with the community. And I wanted to tell you something else, and I forgot what it is. So I'll leave that for right now. We have information on our website. And I think that our ELL staff has communicated with our, you know, ELL population. And that continues. I'm hoping that some of this will be addressed when we start welcoming students back into our schools. Some of the challenges will be worked out. But we're, we're having lots of conversations. Um, but we're we're having lots of conversations. And what I'll do is segue into the technology, because as I segue into that, I just want to say that um, we've met as a leadership team. And again, thinking about some of the information that we shared last time. The last time we had information on who qualified for free or reduced meals was last year, last January, because right now meals are open to anyone. So we took the lists from last year at each building, and we're dividing them up amongst a team in each building, and each building is reaching out to the people on that list. Now, I will say, I want to be very clear that that should not be the first time that people have heard from the school. It's not, I know it's not, but you know, our teachers have reached out, our counselors have reached out, administrators, all levels of people within our district have reached out, and I give them lots of credit for that. But this was one more exercise that as a result of, I don't remember if it was this meeting or another meeting, I said, this is another layer that we should do. So my leadership team committed to calling all all of those families. There's a list of questions that they're asking them around um access to food, but also around connectivity and devices. So that's my segue into technology.
Can we stay on food for a minute? So Marin has a comment. Shannon had her hand up, and I have a question, so.
So I just, again, you know this information because you're dealing with it on a daily basis, but I think it's just really important to be a hundred percent clear with people who are listening right now. So just to sort of reiterate, so the pickup, being at those two sites, at the high school and at Maple, any family can show up. They do not need to call in advance. They simply show up during those hours on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, between ten and twelve. Um, the reason why it's two days, it's every other day too, is because they're gonna get meals for those, for two days, or on the weekend, on Friday, they're getting it for three days. So it's just that um it's really important that everybody understands that that's available to simply show up. They don't need to call in advance. The only reason they would need to be in touch is if they can't make it during that window. Um, I'm assuming then they should be in touch with their school principal. Is that the best person to? Alternative motives, whether they can't arrive at that time, or they're needing some other different special circumstances to reach out to their administrator, um to the principal at their school, to be able to ask for some other additional options.
Right, and or Dale Doran's information is on our website on the um the meals section, her email and her cellphone. And to address your concern or or one of your comments, that is, uh, your comment about families can just show up is slightly different than what we said at the last school committee meeting, because Ken, our food service director, has committed to making more and more meals each day as this, as this, as more families show up. So he's going to have extras every day. He's going to be prepared. So, I mean, unless you're showing up to say, I need to pick up for fifty families, that that might throw him a little bit of a curveball. But you know, if you're just a family and you want to pick up for your children, yes, you can do that.
So I have a question about those postcards. Um, so you're sending the postcards out, which I like the idea of. On that postcard, um, is it going to state that if those times don't work, um, what they should do to call to rectify that those times, those pickup times don't work? And is there going to be a question um that if perhaps they can't get there to pick up the food, is there an avenue for them to talk to someone there? And are those things, those pieces of information gonna be on the postcards?
We were thinking, and we haven't hashed this all out, but we were thinking of making a very um, easy-to-understand communication to families to point them in the right direction for a larger pieces of information. So we want to be very simplistic there. Um, and I, you know, if possible, I'd like to have it in English and Spanish, so I'm trying not to um be very wordy, but just be very like, do you know that? And then just something, and then kind of direct them to where to go.
Okay, or questions and problems of any kind, call this number. Okay. All right, thank you. Shannon, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, um, the group that is working on deliveries is now serving um as of today, twenty-six families and delivering um to fifty children, which is great.
Yes, absolutely.
And you also mentioned, I think, Allison too, that that people can pick up for another family. If they're showing up and they know another family can't get there, they can pick up food for them as well and bring it to them if they're a neighbor or something like that.
And we've also said that kids can pick up meals. So if there's a seventeen, eighteen-year-old has a car, you know, they can come and pick up meals. They don't need their parent to pick up meals for them.
Right. Okay.
And the technology.
Oh, Mayor has, the Mayor has a question or a comment. Sorry, Doctor Leclerc.
That's okay.
Just from the, just from the postcard, um, so you you can work through a mailhouse and and it's much cheaper to actually mail that postcard out to the whole, to the whole city. So you can do current resident and cur- and or current business. You can also get a bigger postcard for the same size. I just happen to have an example.
So Mayor.
Yeah, so you don't have to.
Who should I reach out to?
I will text you the mailhouse that we work with.
Okay.
Um, and and then they can actually, correct, yeah, and then they do the the bulk mail. The thing I would warn um you about is that while the mail has caught up, it, there's still some delay on bulk. So the faster you can get it, the faster it gets into to families here, you know. So what would normally take two days is maybe five or six, maybe seven. Um, but I will actually do that right now before I forget um the contact.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, and the the other thing that I would mention about technology is that um, I think it was at this meeting, we discussed some kind of dashboard. So we have begun the process of adding a dashboard to our district webpage. And we started with technology. And so on our um, district page, and let me just bring up our website to point this out to you. Hold on, I know this is still the PowerPoint. Can everyone see the district website? Okay, so this is, if you're not familiar with this, this is where you uh do, you can do a help desk ticket. Uh, that's for any family can can access a help desk ticket there. And this is our dashboard, which we will provide weekly information. Um, and I want to be fully um open and transparent with everyone. Our IT department has been working very hard on getting the new Chromebooks out to the students. And so um there are a higher number of unresolved tickets than we would like. The week of January eighteenth, there were a hundred and forty-seven unresolved tickets. But it's the deployment of the the six hundred Chromebooks that are taking really uh two technicians' time. Uh, they have five hundred of the six hundred dispersed. They have another one hundred to go, but they hope to wrap that up in the coming days, and then they will be able to dive more deeply into all these unresolved tickets. And some of these unresolved tickets may resolve themselves once the student gets a new machine. So um that's something we're committed to put out there as a start. And so this is, you know, we hope to add more data there, including the metrics information that we've discussed tonight. I'd like to find a place to add that. I'd like to add where we're talking about some data that we can pull from Power School as far as attendance, that we can add that information, but this was a starting point. This was the first stop. And so I wanted to put that information out there. You can see that on a weekly basis, there are a lot of tech tickets that cross um our department's desk, and some of them get sent in different directions depending on what the issue is. But there there were working on a lot of those tickets, and we'll continue to update that every Friday. So we'll put new information out every Friday.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. And oh, did you want me to say something about pool testing very briefly?
Uh, there is sports update and pool testing.
Okay, pool testing, very briefly, is something that we have been exploring um through the Department of Education. There's a group that is starting now to do free pool testing for students that are currently in a hybrid setting. We are not. So we have decided that we're not even pursuing the free option for pool testing at this point in time, because we don't have students in school. We're going to let other communities kind of see how it works. But um it's not that we're against exploring it after the free period is over, but based on the information that we have reviewed, we will need to hire an additional nurse to do our pool testing, so we'll have to find that salary. And we will spend approximately ten thousand per week on pool testing. So in a district that is being cautious about where our dollars go, it's something that we want to um be very thoughtful about doing. And um we're going to wait until we know more from other districts that have already started doing it. So there, we're gonna let other people take the lead for the next six weeks as we work on getting our students back. So I hope to have more to share with you on that in about month and a half. But I know some people, I had some parents asking me about it, so that's why I wanted to give an update.
Thank you.
And sports. So we've had some shifts in our sports. I did see Mr. Evans here earlier, and I think he's here, and I don't know if Mr. Miller is here. But I'm going to, Mr. Evans, do you want to explain what Fall Two is to people? Okay.
Um, so if you recall back in the um, in the early fall, when uh the MIAA was trying to come up with ways for, to allow students to participate, they came up with this option um called Fall Two, which was to take advantage of the uh natural gap that happens between the end of the winter season and the beginning of the spring season. Um, we anticipate, they anticipated that that gap would be larger this year, that there'd be a pushback, um, that some things would end earlier, winter would end earlier, spring would uh start later, some combination thereof. So they created Fall Two um primarily for football. Uh, but now with it being there and with a lot of, um, and because of the recent surge, a lot of the winter sports, a lot of the surrounding communities and communities throughout the state are pushing their winter sports into the Fall Two season. Um, the advantage, obviously, um primarily for the safety is that um, the longer we wait, hopefully, the better the numbers get. The the dates are, I believe, are March one through April twenty-two. Um, so what we were um looking to do is to push um our, uh, so we have three winter sports. Um, swim was approved um for the winter season, but um a lot of the teams uh pushed to Fall Two. So we'd like to move our team to Fall Two. It would still be, as far as I know, a remote um operation as it, as it was approved um a couple months ago, where their meets are remote. Um, that would also give us the opportunity to secure a pool that has a diving board. Where the pool that we have now does not have a diving board. We have divers on our team, and so uh without a diving board, they can't participate. So if we move to Spring Two, that doesn't necessarily guarantee that, but it gives us the time and the opportunity to explore other options for a pool with a diving board. So that was one. Uh, the second item is with regard to basketball. Um, of course, we've had a couple of delays in practices because the community was in red. Uh, we're back in yellow, so they've been able to practice, but um with the idea that a number of the surrounding communities have pushed their season to Fall Two, we would like to seek to move basketball to Fall Two and then um have it be, have them be able to participate competitively with other, against other um teams. Again, so beginning date of March first, I believe, for practices. Third, um, is we're looking at the the hockey team, which is our last winter sport. Um, there are not um enough teams going to Fall Two for hockey for us to look to be, feel the competitive team um for hockey. Allison, remind me to go back to swim when I'm done for, because I forgot something, but um what the hockey team would like us to do um is approve um them being able to use a hockey rink for practices uh at least once a week through the Fall Two season. So they're currently doing skills and drills in a gymnasium. Uh, not a big, not, they're, they're really not enjoying that very much. Um, they'd love to be able to get on a hockey rink um where have about eight to ten players. I see your name, uh, Marin, your hand, Marin, but um just quickly, they they have about eight to ten players, um, and they would like to use a rink once a week when we get to the Fall Two and be able to use that through the Fall Two season, so. Marin, I've got two other things, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
I I just, based on our history as a committee, it it might be helpful as opposed to getting the entire vision of all the details um to take it sport by sport so that we can actually go through that process after you lay out maybe a little bit more detail. I think it just, we we have been challenged in terms of trying to take the whole big thing all at once, so I please finish your thoughts, but then I think we might want to take it sport by sport as our history has shown.
I'd be happy to guide you through that process. Um, uh, so if I, if I could just sort of get them all out there, and then, and then we'll go back to the, to item one. So um, the thing I forgot about the swim team is uh they would also like to be able to, if they go to sw- to um to Fall Two, to be able to include their Hampshire's um high school um swimmers as well. We um, we only went with our non-co-op um athletes with the swim team, and that swim team would like to include their Hampshire swimmers as well. So last item um that we'd like to discuss, so it's the fourth, so there's four one, four items, is to be able to continue to practice if the um community goes into somehow goes back to red. Obviously, we've been hearing a lot about trends moving in good directions. Uh, hopefully, our red days are behind us, but um there is a request to be able to continue practicing in red. So item one was to allow the swim team to move their season to uh Fall Two and to allow their um competitors from Hampshire to join the team uh as, in in a full co-op. That's item one.
And can you just give the dates of Fall Two season then?
Yeah, March one to April twenty-two.
So I think it's, it's important to note that the rationale behind shifting to March was hoping that the virus numbers would be lower than they are today. And so these, you know, there has been a lot of back and forth, and there are other communities that are also mirroring this. So I would just remind folks, particularly with swim, if we're taking one at a time. Swim is designated a lower-risk sport. You know that. And number two, you already um approved swim for this current season in a competitive format because the meets are virtual. So I think all Bill is really asking is to shift to March. Not necessarily because it would allow them to be competitive. They were going to be competitive now. It would just hopefully allow them to have more competitors from other communities. So.
So this is marked as a update. Is there a reason why we're not bumping this to our February 9 meeting where we're hoping that the numbers are going to be down?
And I think Cindy, and Bill can jump in, or Brian. I think for SWIM, because it's competitive, they either need to start competing now.
Yep.
Or they need to push it to the next season. So I think there's an urgency with the SWIM. But maybe some of the other sports could wait until February. But I'll let them.
Thank you. That was my question. Because we have already approved the SWIM, I think there's no problem with us just automatically talking about how to bump that. Hockey and basketball, my question then would be, should we just bump it to February 9th? Since we're meeting, we're hoping that the numbers will be down. And I think it will be easier to make a better decision. I'm totally comfortable with deciding. To me, it's a no-brainer for swimming.
If I could just invite Brian, in case, I didn't see Brian earlier, but I see him now.
I'm here.
Any of those points, Brian, before the discussion continues? Just in case I miss some things, if that's okay.
Yeah, sorry, I was driving. So that's why I wasn't able to get on earlier. The SWIM, we actually, today I was able to talk to Westfield State, and they're going to allow us to use their pool in March, which would allow us to dive and compete. So I mean, it sounds like Cindy's kind of on board with moving that anyways. And you're right, the other two, we can just continue with our skills and drills practices and revisit that in February. The one thing that maybe we could discuss tonight would be the possibility of continuing our skills and drills if our town does happen to go back into the red. We already missed the first two weeks. Yesterday was our first day of actually practicing. You know, a lot of, you know, I think, you know, requiring everyone to test once a week and whatnot would allow us to, even though our town goes into the red, to continue with our skills and drills with all the different precautions we have in place.
And Brian, the other SWIM issue was allowing Hampshire to.
Right. Right. When we're a co-op team, and so we had not allowed Hampshire to join us for the co-op during the winter season. Our hope is that possibly come March, we could include them to us for SWIM. The other issue that we actually, I don't know how we didn't think to discuss this today, but football is also a Fall Two sport, which is something, I guess we could hold off till February 9 for that as well. But obviously, they're going to need some information for scheduling and things like that. So.
So Brian, can you just, can you just tell us just for information? Are there other teams, are there other football teams going into Fall Two in this area? Information we could get for February 9, that would be helpful.
Yeah, right now, no one has committed to it. The MIAA is moving forward with it. But obviously, that's going to have to go to the local Board of Health and school committees to make the final decision. As far as I know, no one has made that final decision yet.
So should we start with discussion about swimming? Okay. So Jonathan?
I guess my question would be, how do we see our testing requirements playing out with the Hampshire Regional students? Is that something that we think we could still require from them for their participation?
For SWIM, we only had the initial test requirement.
Because it's virtual.
Thank you for reminding.
Yeah. So yes, I think we could require that.
For myself, and I usually weigh in last for myself. I'm totally comfortable with moving them to March 1. We did approve it already, and that feels like an easy one to just continue on with. So anybody, Shannon?
I see unmuted. I am, aren't I?
Yes.
Okay. So Cindy, we're not, it's not, it's not the same. It's not, we're not voting on the same. They want to add Hampshire back in. So it's not just an automatic.
No, it isn't. But it is, it is, and we absolutely should vote on it. But it also, at least, is still something that we're talking about, which is virtual. So that's why I say it's the same, is that we're not talking about having them all.
Make sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Maren?
Again, I have to say that my initial reaction is that it's not the same. You know, Hampshire Regional has been in hybrid this whole time. Is that correct, Dr. Leclerc? Can you confirm that?
They're in remote right now. I don't know that Hampshire Regional has been back in person. I know Norris was, I know some of the elementaries were.
Hampshire's been hybrid.
Hybrid?
Mm-hmm.
They went hybrid later on, later on in the fall.
Right, but they haven't gone back to remote yet. And I don't think they're going to.
So I guess it's just, I would be curious to know in terms of the team makeup, is there a number of students that are coming in from Hampshire Regional? Or, you know, I think, because I think we were talking before, like there was four or five participants, just with the concern about crossing over. You know, these students will have separate lanes, but certainly they'll still be in closer contact with students who are in schools in other districts. So.
Yeah, the makeup, it's about 50/50. So right now, we currently have, or it has been in the past. I haven't, you know, polled Hampshire yet to see how many swimmers they have. But traditionally, it's about 50/50. So it would be about eight to 10 swimmers probably coming from Hampshire would be my.
Okay. Okay. Jonathan? Anybody? Marissa?
Lori?
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
And Mayor?
Mary LaChapelle, aye.
And Cindy Kuzinski, aye. The other sports, I'm thinking, if everybody agrees, I would like to talk about basketball and football too at our February 9 meeting. And that way, we are more informed as to how our numbers are going. Is that good? Is everybody comfortable with that?
My preference.
All right.
I just, I'm sorry, I have a question. Sorry. Do you guys need time to start conditioning and stuff for football? For February 9, okay?
February 9 would be okay because there's a mandatory 10-day, once you start the season anyways, of conditioning. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then the last question is the fall hockey practice, if we turn red. And in this case, usually I go last. I will say, I will tell you, my main priority is that I want our kids in school learning. I think that is, they have just been waiting forever. Families have been waiting forever. And I really would want to pause and ask for another pause on practices if we go red again. My hope is that the community is going to continue to go down the numbers. But my push, my personal push is to get kids in school. And if we're going red, I don't want them mixing and matching more. I want us to behave better and get those numbers back down so we can quickly get everybody in. So that's my own personal way, and I just couldn't sit on that too long. Anybody else want to talk about that at all?
There is scientific evidence. There was something published in the Washington Post that I believed I shared with you, the science behind why hockey is actually more dangerous. So I'm sure people could find that. I wouldn't want them to be together in the red.
If I can just be clear, though, I did read that article. I think it was, I saw it in the New York Times. I think it was in the New York Times. And I shared that article, I think, with Brian. But Brian informed me that the protocols for high school hockey in Massachusetts are, I think, pretty significant. And I don't want to, I don't want to say the wrong thing. But I think that if students are on the ice, they are masked and wearing face shields, the plastic shields. So, and then they're not doing any scrimmage. So they're not coming in contact together. And in that article, it was all around practices and games where students were coming in direct contact with one another. I think it's just important, I just wanted to point out, I don't want people to think that's the same.
No, I know. Hockey is actually one of my favorite sports. And when you do that sprinting at the end, and then you're put into the box, and how close they are in proximity with wet masks, that's what makes it so dangerous, as well as the temperatures in the rink.
But the question that we're actually asking is about continuing practice during a time when we're red. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows that's what I believe we're talking about. Correct, Bill?
Yeah, it says drills and skills for both hockey and basketball. So the drills and skills already have a number of precautions in place as put forth by your, by the votes that you had a couple of months ago, or last month, whenever it was. So those would stay in place. We're not, so if the town goes back to red, what we're asking is to be able to continue practicing, knowing that the students are getting tested weekly, because basketball and hockey are both weekly, knowing that the other precautions in terms of physical distancing, door open, and a minimum number of students, because there's just, you know, the amount of space in the building, in the gym, compared to the number of students, there's plenty of room for them to spread out. So that's the request, is to allow drills and skills to continue if the town goes back to red for basketball and hockey, keeping all of the precautions in place. Hockey is not on a rink yet. That's a conversation for February 9. They're currently just in the gym and doing conditioning, but with all those other rules in place.
Any conversation?
I mean, I'll just, I'll just throw my thoughts out, which is, I certainly appreciate this, you know, the thought that because the students are getting tested weekly, it shows that it is likely safe for them to continue doing that. I also believe that if the city is in the red, that is a clear indication that people should be staying home and isolating. And that, that, you know, maintaining that precedent as far as, you know, how people should be behaving in the community, I think, is important. And it's certainly my hope that we don't get to that and we continue in the direction that we're going. And at this point, it's moot. But I just want to, you know, maintain those standards, essentially.
Maintaining those standards, essentially. Any conversation?
I mean, I'll just, I'll just throw my thoughts out, which is, I certainly appreciate this, you know, the thought that because the students are getting tested weekly, it shows that it is likely safe for them to continue doing that. I also believe that if the city is in the red, that is a clear indication that people should be staying home and isolating. And that, that, you know, maintaining that precedent as far as, you know, how people should be behaving in the community, I think, is important. And it's certainly my hope that we don't get to that and we continue in the direction that we're going. And at this point, it's moot. But I just want to, you know, maintain those standards, essentially.
Anybody else? So I am going to take it that we're going to table that subject, changing that until maybe the February 9 meeting, when we look again at those numbers and we make that decision. Is that the sense that I'm getting? Because I'm not seeing, okay. All right. Okay. That makes sense.
Thank you.
I'm all set.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I, again, I'm just, before we go on to payroll and everything, I just, I cannot say enough about how much we need to get kids back into school. And I'm begging everyone in East Hampton to work to get those numbers down. I am so happy that we will be able to get vaccines soon. I don't know exactly how soon. My hope is that we are going to be able to start to pick up steam. But certainly, for me, educating our kids and getting them back in the buildings is my true hope and really my passion. So, all right. Anybody want to say anything else before we just go on to Matters for Action? We're not going to skip down to other, but I can switch the orders. So is there anything else on the agenda before we burn out? No? All righty. Okay. Then Marissa, can we go on to Matters for Action?
I move to approve the school payroll dated 1/14/2021 in the amount of $518,575.89.
Okay, Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Lori?
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle? You're on mute.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I move to approve accounts payable authorization for payment dated 1/14/2021 in the amount of $168,479.39.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Lori?
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Maren? Maren Goldstein, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I don't know if we need to have any discussion, but I would move to approve the 2021 school committee meeting schedule.
I'll second that. I do have a quick question about it. And it's clearly a precedent because it's the same with this year's calendar. But I'm curious, the reasoning behind only one scheduled February meeting, considering, I think, usually the holiday week is the week before what our second meeting would be.
I don't know if we need to have any discussion, but I would move to approve the 2021 school committee meeting schedule.
I'll second that. I do have a quick question about it and it's clearly a precedent because it's the same with this year's calendar, but I'm curious the reasoning behind. Only one scheduled February meeting, considering I think usually the holiday week is the week before what our second meeting would be. I'm just curious if there's a reason for that. If not, that's fine too.
All right, maybe while we're waiting for, I would also add, you know. We're going to have a lot going into next school year, just with all the different changes happening. I, it's a little. Having only one meeting in August and one meeting in September seems also. You know, you know how much I love to meet, but it does seem like those would be times to, even for short meetings. To have opportunities to check in about the new school year and stuff.
Yeah, I have no problem with twice a month for November and February.
For August and September.
Say that again?
I think Maren was saying for August and September.
Not, not February and November?
Well, I was saying February just because I was wondering if there was a reason because we did the same thing this year.
It's usually during break, that's why.
Yeah, I mean, we've already added a February 23rd meeting, so that's going to be added to the schedule. I have no problem with November and December staying as single meeting months as well as June and July. But I think as we've seen leading up to the school year and definitely the first month of the school year, I would suggest adding. What would be the 24th and potentially the 7th, 24th of August and the 7th of September back into the calendar.
I agree.
See, I was, I was reading this as the next school year, so.
It is.
The February was next February. It didn't register that that was.
Oh.
This next month. Thanks for pointing that out.
We're already in this calendar.
Yeah, I think, I think we, we did have extra meetings to prepare for school. It's going to be a crazy year. Hopefully it's going to be an exciting year. So do we want to have two extra meetings there?
So do we want to amend the motion to have the additional meeting in August and September?
Yes, do we also want November? We're trying to decide. No, November is looking like. So we're looking at just adding the two in August and September. Any, do we have a motion and do we have a second?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2021 school committee meeting schedule with an additional meeting in August and September.
I'll second that new motion.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, now you all switched on my board, so just get ready. I'll try to remember. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Meir?
Mary LaChapelle, aye.
I forgot Lori, Lori, because you switched over.
I'm here, Lori Garcia, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye. Okay, good. I don't know why that happened. That was funny. Okay. The superintendent contract update. So we had a, a session and we'll be talking to the ma, the superintendent this week. And we'll have a full update on our February ninth meeting. Okay. Do we need a vote?
Well, it's just under, so I'm just clarifying. So no need to vote on that this meeting because it was under the committee action. We'll be voting at our next meeting. Okay.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, go on to the next.
Yes.
So I would make a motion to accept the minutes from the January 12, 2021 meeting.
I'll second that.
A discussion. Okay, Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Meir?
Mary LaChapelle, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the executive session held on January 19, 2021. To be withheld until these matters are resolved.
I'll second that.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Meir?
Mary LaChapelle, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, yeah, thank you to everyone for your work and presentations and I will be adjourned.
Maren, aye. All right, Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa? Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Meir?
Mary LaChapelle, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. Thank you very much, everybody. We'll see you February nine.
Take care, folks.